Good evening. I'd like to call to order the September 6, 2002 Canal Winchester City Council Work Session. Roll call.
Ms. Amos, present.
Ms. Amos, Mr. Busker, Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Milliken.
Here.
Mr. Shea.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Do we have a motion to excuse Ms. Amos and Mr. Busker?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Walker, seconded by Mr. Shea. Roll call, please.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Milliken.
Yes.
Also in attendance, Mayor Ebert, Public Service Director Matt Peoples, Development Director Lucas Hare, and Finance Director Amanda Jackson. We'll bring us right into request for City Council. We have Resolution 22-033. Clerk, please read the title.
A resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Steve Paulsgrove to serve the remainder of an unexpired four-year term as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission expiring on December 31, 2023.
Mayor Ebert.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Yeah, Steve Paulsgrove is a resident of Canal Winchester. He lived in Canal Winchester. He was on City Council from '88 to '92. He was Violet Township Zoning Appeals Board for 14 years, the Violet Township Zoning Board for 11 years, the Langston County Community Improvement Corporation for 14 years, Fairfield County Chamber of Commerce for 15 years, Fairfield County Parks and Commission for 29 years. This guy's pretty old. And with United Way Fairfield County for 17 years. He's held leadership positions in just about every board he's been on. I think he's a very, very, very qualified candidate for this position. He currently lives in Canal Winchester. Once again, he was born in Madison Township, went to Groport High School. He lived in Canal Winchester from '87 to '92, moved to Violet Township, and he couldn't stand it, so he came back to Canal Winchester. So he's here. Steve, would you like?
Any comments? Any questions? I'll just say, I've known Steve for many years. I've been involved with him down in my days as the Economic Development Director and Congressional aide for several different members of Congress. We've worked on committees together. He's very well qualified, smart guy, has banking, financial background, so he'll be a true asset to our community on serving on this board. Appreciate you stepping up, Steve. Thank you.
I'll move to, move it on.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Motion to move it forward.
Right. Got a motion from Mr. Shea. Do I have a second? Second, Mr. Milliken. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Milliken.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Brings us to Resolution 22-034. Clerk, please read the title.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Natural Resources to transfer canal lands.
I'm sorry. Mr. Hare, I was thinking about something.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. This is similar to agreements we've done in the past with the State of Ohio. There are remnants of canal lands throughout the city and outside the city that we would like to acquire. This specific parcel is just across Tryon Street here. It's three tenths of an acre behind the block wall that's there. That is a remnant piece of the canal lands. With the city now controlling all of the parcels here, we thought it'd be beneficial for the long term to also control that parcel. We've had an immediate need for utility relocation in there. I think we've since resolved that because this process has taken so long, so there are no immediate plans for that parcel at this time.
Discussion? Questions?
I have a couple quick questions. The homeowners that surround that small parcel, has there been any discussion with them, or have you heard from any of them, or at this point in time?
The only discussion is regards to maintenance of that parcel.
Okay.
And so the city has now taken over maintenance, even though we don't have a dig in over ownership yet.
Okay. And is there any liability concern with anything on that property? If I recall, it's just a grassland, a small piece of grass. Is there any reason to be concerned about any liability for the city on it?
It's, you know, it's a vacant parcel with the exception of the stone wall. Mr. Boggs can probably speak to any liability, but I don't perceive it any different than any other city-owned property.
Is that, is the Indian wall, is that part of this parcel?
I believe that's in the road right of way currently.
Okay, all right.
Please note that Mr. Busker joined us at 6:06. Thank you. Sorry for being late. No problem. Any further questions or discussion?
The outbuilding that's shown on the survey, is that still there?
I believe it is, yes.
Who does that belong to?
It belongs to the Stitler family.
Stitler.
Stitler family.
Do we have an easement in place for them so they don't have to, somebody come along and take down their existing structure that's been there for years?
We do not at this time, no. I don't know. The state typically will transfer any easements, so the Stitlers have purchased canal lands before from the state adjacent to this. And so I don't know if there's an easement agreement. They were doing their title search, the state was, to figure out that. But easements would transfer if there are some in place.
And do we need to give one if we acquire this?
We would have to work out a resolution there. Either the, I don't know if the shed's on skids or can be moved.
I'm gonna throw something crazy out there. This isn't time sensitive, right?
It is not.
Can we go back and talk to them about that outbuilding and make sure we're not gonna have any issues down the road?
Yeah, I think there, we have a certain number of days on this. I believe it's 90 to respond, so, yeah, we have to sign the agreement on or before November 1st. So as long as we had a resolution prior to October 1st, so that this went into effect prior to November 1st, and the mayor could sign it.
Okay.
Does that give us enough readings?
It's a resolution. It only requires.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Right, right.
Would you mind doing that?
Yeah, I can in person.
All right, thank you.
So we have a motion, we need a motion to table this?
I'll move to table this until the next meeting.
All right. I have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Amos. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Upstein.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Milliken.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
That brings us to Resolution 22-035. Clerk, please read the title.
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. This is an annual resolution that we are required to pass. As you recall, we approved a tax budget for fiscal year 2023 back at the beginning of July that was filed with the county auditor as required in the revised code. This resolution actually is done by the Budget Commission to adjust any voted levies. The city of Canal Winchester does not have any voted levies, therefore this is more of a formality for us. You can see on the second page of this resolution is an estimate of property tax that we will receive, well, property tax and home sit and rollback that we will receive in 2023. And at this point, like I said, this is just a formality for us because there is no adjustment to our millage. It remains at two mills.
Discussion? Questions? Do I have a motion to move it to full council?
So moved.
So moved. Mr. Shea, seconded by Mrs. Amos. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Milliken.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Upstein.
Brings us to Resolution 22-036. Clerk, please read the title.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with the Canal Winchester Industry and Commerce Corporation and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. The proposal before you is to allow the city to enter into a lease with the Canal Winchester Industry and Commerce Corporation for 20 South High Street. As part of acquiring that property, there's a current tenant in the building. To be able to lease to that tenant without going out to a public bid process, the city needs to essentially lease this to the CWICC, who can then lease through a sublease to the tenant of their choosing. And so this would allow the city to lease to CWICC. The CWICC would then sublease to Dr. Murray, who is the current tenant in there, so that he can continue his optometry practice there for a period of one year. And so the proposal before you would be to lease to the Canal Winchester Industry and Commerce Corporation for a dollar a year, and then the CWICC would then sublease to Dr. Murray for $2,300 a month. The proposal was approved by the Canal Winchester Industry and Commerce Corporation at their meeting last Wednesday to enter into the sublease agreement. And so this would need to be done to complete that. The intention would be to have the rent funds be retained by the CWICC, and then those would be used to renovate the building at the completion of the lease.
Questions? Discussion?
Just for the record, Mr. Hare, at the CWICC meeting, I believe that you said that should they find a new space within that 12 months, they're still obligated for the full 12 months of rent, correct?
That is correct.
Are there extension provisions in there if they don't?
There is not. So as far as I'm aware, they're currently negotiating on two spaces within Canal Winchester.
Okay. And that $30,000 approximately that they're gonna take in in rent, are we, does CWIC have like a specific account for building maintenance that's gonna go into, or is it just in a general fund? How do we know that stays earmarked?
The, I would defer to Mrs. Jackson, but I don't believe their funding is really that complex at this point. They've never really had much funding.
Well, it looked like it was $15,000 on the books, but yeah, I just wanna make sure that that's the commitment we have from the CWICC.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Do I have a motion to move to full council?
I'll move to Resolution 22-036 to full council.
Mr. Milliken moves, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Walker. Roll call, please.
Mr. Milliken.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Brings us to Resolution 22-037. Clerk, please read the title.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to acquire an access easement from Fairfield Tryon LLC.
Mr. Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. This would allow the mayor to acquire a lease from Fairfield Tryon. If you recall, we previously acquired a six-foot strip of land from Chase Bank to accommodate this pedestrian and vehicular access easement. This is the second part of that. As the owner of this easement has moved into construction, they've asked that we contribute $12,500 to acquire this lease. That's essentially the cost of the off-site construction, so the construction on the portion of land that the city of Canal Winchester owns and the paving associated with that and the design costs associated with getting those grades right. And so they're asking that we pay that amount to acquire this access easement. At the end of that, it'll provide access from Waterloo Street to the towing path alley parking areas, which will be a much more direct access and much more accessible to the public to be able to find that access point. And so it's wide enough, it's 26 feet width, which is enough to have, you know, both pedestrian and vehicular access through that easement area.
Questions? Discussion?
Didn't we spend $20,000 earlier this year for another easement on the same stretch?
Correct.
Okay. Is that, when I'm looking at the picture here on the paper, is that the gray shaded area that's not in the red that would be immediately to the right of it? Is that, that's the part that we acquired from Chase there?
Yes, immediately adjacent. It's a six-foot wide permanent easement and a 20-foot construction easement. And so the pavement needs to be adjusted in that area to match up grade-wise, so that's the cost that is associated with this. It's for the off-site construction.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further? Do I have a motion to bring to full council?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Shea, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Walker. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Milliken.
Yes.
Brings us to Resolution 22-038. Clerk, please read the title.
A resolution directing the clerk of council to research and report on options for digital audio transcription.
So, is this Mr. Shea?
Well, yes. I was the one that asked Mr. Boggs to write this up. You know, Mrs. Amos' point about transcription software and helping Jordan with the ease of her job just seemed like a great idea, and I thought it would be a great assignment for Jordan to do, to go out and find some options for software that would help with transcription and possibly make her job easier to do for us. So that's why this resolution is before you to direct her to do that.
Mr. Clark, I have a question. I'm a little bit confused by this. After the last council meeting, I believe, this, I believe it was brought up, mayor asked me to take a, start taking a look at this, and I already started doing that. My department handles the IT portion, so I don't quite understand why we're now going with a resolution to do this rather than the request that was at the last meeting.
So I asked for this, was it last week, that?
Yeah, last week, I would say.
So I asked Mr. Boggs to write it up. I didn't know that our request was being investigated because it sort of felt like it wasn't well received, and so I decided to ask the clerk to do it.
When Ms. Amos asked about that, I said, yes, we'll look into it. There was no question about it.
Okay.
That's, that is correct. That is accurate. You gave your word that you would have your department look into it, and that's what I've been waiting for. So I have no reason to believe they are not or wouldn't.
Can you give us the stats of where you are, Matt? I mean, have you located anybody that?
Yeah, I was actually.
How much?
I was actually, no, I've not had how much. I was actually at a meeting, and it was, it was on a Zoom that we were in person and also had some attendees online, and it was actually scrolling across the bottom of the screen as this was going through. So I asked the person, we have been in contact, trying to get me hooked up with their IT person. So this was, you know, as obviously with Labor Day and stuff, this was actually last week that I saw the, saw the software, or at least the, what was, what was on the screen.
Where was that?
City Grove City.
Grove City.
It was at one of our healthcare consortium meetings.
So how, I'm not as tech savvy as some of the younger people. What, how did, so when you speak, it just immediately goes in and types out the?
Yeah, what I saw was basically like close captioning. It was going across the bottom, and it was software-driven. So I, it's, other than that, I don't, I don't know.
So that, is that for the people at home to?
So the question or the reason I asked for the research to be done is so that the minutes for the meeting could be more expeditiously and more efficiently created so that they would be readily available sooner. And that helps Ms. Pierce. It takes some work off of her plate.
Right.
That's all the ask was for, was just to do some research.
And I understand, but we also have YouTube channels going on, and this is live, so, and the, I believe the minutes are not official until you all approve them. So from the expedition standpoint, we're live right now, if I understand that correctly. So any, I would go there first rather than going to a minutes type of thing. But I mean, I get where you're coming from, but.
So the, again, the ask was simply to do the research and to find out if there is what is available on the marketplace and what it would cost.
I think this sounds like something that would be wise to do on the surface level, but I think we would be doing ourselves a disservice if we didn't ask Ms. Pierce how she feels about it. Ms. Pierce, do you feel that this type of software would make your job easier or more difficult, in which you prefer what you're doing now?
I honestly prefer what I do now. I read the subtitles on YouTube. It helps a lot better. I tried the transcribe on my personal laptop, and it doesn't always give you the correct wording. Like, if, you know, like I was reading minutes from last week or the previous meeting, and Ms. Jackson had said, "As you may recall," and it would type out "as you may call." It doesn't always type what it's supposed to say. So I always have to go back and redo everything, and then I'd have to go in and separate who said what. You know, I like what I do, but if you guys want me to try something else, I can try that as well.
I think, thank you, Ms. Pierce. I think too that we, we are making steps to get minutes out sooner. They may not be the official approved minutes, but instead of waiting until our packets come out, we're now anticipating starting to get minutes a little sooner, hopefully. So I just wanted to, you know, lay that out there, that we're, we're working on things that, to make the situation a little bit more smoother.
Yeah, and if there's improvement in that, then that's, that's good. I, and part of it was, when I get asked by a resident about something, or I wanna recall for my own benefit what part of that conversation was, I don't have time to go back and watch a two-hour YouTube video where I can pretty much scan the notes very quickly, I can find what I was looking for, and grab that piece of the conversation. So that's why I was asked. So that's why I was asking. And again, with all due respect, it's like they're not getting published expeditiously. And so if there's improvement in that, that's great. Again, my ask was pretty simple. If it's causing someone heartburn, please take it offline with me and, and we'll talk about it.
Yeah, I guess the, the, the heartburn to me is, we were asked to do it, and now we're being compelled to do it.
Yeah, I, you'll have to ask.
And that's what I don't understand. That's, that's a confusion on, on my part. So I felt that I was doing something wrong when, I mean, we're just talking, I, I guess it's been three weeks since the last meeting. So I'm, I was concerned when I saw this that, that I've done something improperly.
For the record, I am unaware that anyone has done anything that's not perfectly acceptable.
Thank you.
I'd like to add, first of all, thank you for starting the research and getting that going, Mr. Peoples. And also, being new, our clerk of counsel too, and some vacations since with Ms. Jackson, which has been training our clerk of counsel with the vacations and some illnesses, I believe, that's probably kind of slowed some things down too in getting about. I think that that alone, if, if this is too expensive and we can't, and we don't go with that, and we choose not to, I believe that these will come out, correct me if I'm wrong, but Ms. Jackson, probably a little bit earlier, once the training, or maybe the training's complete. But I know there's been some illnesses and vacations between the two of the folks.
And I, I don't want to put words in a man's mouth, but I think she will probably tell you that sometimes it's very difficult to transcribe what you all say. So even.
Speak into the mic.
Hannah has problems at times.
Well, I'm the only person to put it on there, so I will gladly withdraw it since it's already in process. So I'm going to withdraw it from the agenda.
All right. We have a motion to withdraw, resolution twenty-two dash zero three eight. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Busker, roll call please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amy?
Yes.
Brings us to ordinance twenty-two dash zero three two. Ms. Jackson? Oh, I'm sorry. Clerk, please read the title.
An ordinance to amend the 2022 appropriation ordinance number twenty-one dash zero five three, amendment number four.
Now, Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Included in your packets this evening is actually a memo detailing what this appropriation amendment would do, so I will quickly go over that. In the general fund, we're asking for a hundred and seven thousand two hundred dollars to be used for three different things. Twelve thousand five hundred dollars would be used for the easement that was discussed a couple pieces of legislation ago. That would be resolution twenty-two dash zero three seven. Fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars for the two quarterly payments that we will need in 2022 for the Twenty South High Street purchase that was approved previously by council with ordinance number twenty-two dash zero two three. And then finally, eighty thousand dollars for McGill Park Phase Two engineering costs. We have actually started, we did have some money in the budget to get the engineer working on that, but we will need additional funds to work on the other tasks that were in their proposal for Phase Two. In the bed tax fund, we're asking to appropriate sixty-five thousand dollars. This was the direct result of your committee of the whole meeting last Monday. Fifty thousand of that to go to the construction of McGill Park and fifteen thousand of it to the Canal Winchester Industry and Commerce Corporation. I do have a note in here that additionally, council had directed sixty thousand dollars from the bed tax fund balance to be earmarked for the city's bicentennial celebration in 2028. I don't see a reason, a legitimate reason, to create a second, another fund for that. When we create funds, there are certain funds that the revised code allows us to do, but there are other funds that if we want to do it, we have to ask for auditor of state approval. And based on my experience, I'm not sure that they would necessarily see a need for another fund. So I'm recommending that we just earmark that money within the bed tax fund so that it is not spent but not necessarily transferred to another fund. And then finally, in the gender road tip fund, this appropriates three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is for the reimbursement of some public utility improvements that were completed on Winchester Boulevard as previously approved by council with ordinance number twenty-one dash zero three eight. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, discussion?
Ms. Jackson, the, with regards to the bed tax discussion from our committee of the whole meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Could you remind me when we would expect to see that ordinance come through?
Thad and I have been working on that, so the hope would be the next meeting.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to move ordinance twenty-two dash zero three two?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Amy, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Busker, roll call please.
Ms. Amy?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
I'm staying.
Brings us to ordinance twenty-two dash zero three three. Clerk, please read the title.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor or designate to enter into contracts with the director of transportation for the installation of a cable barrier along US Route Thirty-three.
Mr. Peoples?
Thank you, Mr. Clark. This is a contract that, or an ordinance that authorized mayor to enter into a contract with, our agreement with the transportation, Ohio Department of Transportation for the cable state barrier on US Thirty-three. This is a, what started out from a lobbying effort that Mayor Ebert started with Senator Schaefer, I believe. There was, if you recall, earlier this year, there was a crossover accident between gender road and high street, a previous couple of years before that, there was another crossover, a dump truck blew a tire, went across just east of high street, went across and killed a dispatcher for Franklin County Sheriff's Department, I believe. And so we've been, kind of, mayor started on that one, started lobbying with ODOT. My understanding is the cable state barrier is scheduled to go down to Allen Road. This one is, ends it, I believe, dilate. Some of the reason behind that is the Pickerton Road interchange will also be able to provide some of that cable state barrier. Excuse me, this, this agreement or this ordinance though is just for the procedural for Ohio, for ODOT to gain our permission to do so within our corporation limit.
Yeah, just to add to what Matt said, that was a letter that went out to, not everybody I could think of, to tell you the truth. Not only Senator Schaefer, but our state rep, our congressman, the governor, it went out to the director of ODOT, and it, it gained some traction pretty quick. They put it in the budget right away, so we're happy for it.
Questions, discussion?
How, will that go all the way up to Bixby then?
Uh, that is in the ordinance. Let me, let me check out.
Near gender, I'm sorry. Near gender is what it says.
I'm sorry?
Says near gender, I found it.
From Bixby?
It's just gendered out.
Gendered, okay.
And we don't have any utilities in there, do we?
We have water line, sewer line crossings, but no, no lateral.
And they won't puncture that line, will they?
They shouldn't with just a cable barrier, they'll, they'll go down a couple feet because that is, that is designed to like catch and grab, if you will. I'll call it like a, like a baseball mitt, it'll, it'll come in there and a webbing will, will keep it from, from going through.
All right.
Or, will keep it, yeah, it's not guaranteed. Less, less likelihood of a crossover.
They're pretty amazing.
Yeah.
When it gets broke or hit, who becomes responsible for fixing it? Is it us or is it ODOT?
I believe it's Ohio Department of Transportation.
Okay.
Anything further? Do I have a motion to move ordinance twenty-two dash zero three three to full counsel?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Busker, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Shea, roll call please.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amy?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Clark, one, one thing.
Sure.
There is a time limit on this. We're just requesting this for one reading at, or for the reading here at council, but the next meeting will more than likely be an emergency to get the timing done.
Okay. So will that reflect in the next legislature, it'll be an emergency declaration in the?
Uh, it'll be emergency or waive the, the third reading and pass that, pass it up.
Okay, good enough.
So I've got to check the timing.
Okay, thank you. Brings us to ordinance twenty-two dash zero three four. Clerk, please read the title.
An ordinance to set water user fees for customers outside the special water allocation district.
Uh, Mr. Peoples?
Thank you, Mr. Clark. This ordinance and, and the one following twenty-two dash zero three five kind of go hand in hand. We have done a four-year rate ordinance for, this will be our, our third one if this passes through, obviously, to, to go through the water and sewer rates. This request is for two percent each year for both water and for sewer, so for a, a total of eight percent. On that, our last ordinance was two years of no increases and two years of two percent increases. And going through our, just kind of our, the history of that, we've had, we went four years total with no increases on either one. Kind of both of these together, start with the water. They, we have quite a bit of capital projects that we're looking at, the Water Treatment Plant Administration building. We got, well, we got a loan for a two-point-six million dollar water line improvement project. You know, we, we'll have to pay that loan back, obviously. You know, we're, we're looking at, at a water treatment plant expansion, we're coming up on, coming up on twenty years in the, in the existing plant. You know, we're getting to the point where we're replacing some things in that, some of the, the equipment are going, just normal wear items type of thing. And, and obviously in a, in a water treatment plant with the, with the humidity in there, it's, it gets a, a little bit corrosive at times. So just on, on that side, on the sanitary sewer side, we, we got a, the headworks project that, that could be upwards of eighteen, twenty million dollars that we're, we're looking at, as, as well as some other improvements. We're going to have some regulatory requirements that we believe we'll, we'll have to install for phosphorus removal within the next five years. And then additional sewer work that goes along with that as well. And then, you know, even, even more of a corrosive environment with some of the equipment on that. The, the treatment plant that we have there is from nineteen ninety-seven for the most part. And, and we're looking at, again, we're replacing some of those items. So we, we did do a, a two percent. We are, are very conservative with our, with our budgeting. We will have, Ms. Jackson, just reminding me, will, in, at the end of two thousand, or in two thousand twenty-four will be our last sewer debt payment on that, on that nineteen ninety-seven plant. So this kind of going in with the, the headworks project we have is going to be some really good timing on that, but we need to prepare for that. And we, we really like to keep our, our rate increases at modest levels and still be able to fund our, our operations.
Questions, discussion?
The phosphate that we're, we're putting in the, what is, I haven't asked this in a while. What is the level? It's been a while. What's our level now of softness or hard?
Hardness?
Yeah.
It's actually in the written report every month, Joe Taylor provides that. I believe it was a hundred and twenty. We're, we're right at one, one seventeen to one twenty-two, right in that range. And, and that's really good, one twenty-two is probably on the high side on that. So you're, you're going to be looking at, at, at less than one twenty for the most part. And that's where we've maintained it for the last probably six years, since we started that process.
Fantastic, thank you.
So, and, and as you bring that up, the chemical costs for supplies has, has gone through the roof, and we're, we will probably be back for a, an appropriation amendment to, to have to pay, get more money to pay for chemicals this year, but it's just, it is getting that, that bad.
Thank you.
Mr. Peoples, you, it talks specifically about being for customers outside of the special water allocation district or SWAD. Can you just, at a very high level, is that a geographical boundary?
It is. It's basically Canal Point area. We, with our agreement with Pickerton, they serve us, we buy the water from them, they're at a different rate than what we are, so we call that the special water allocation district.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
How come they're not raising bulk?
Uh, I thought we did.
It's nine-ten, 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 nine-ten.
Uh, it, it's, it has been eight-ninety, so we are raising it, it's just not every year. Bulk has been eight-ninety since two thousand thirteen. You know, we, we don't, I don't, I don't know what, what the sales are total on it for, for that. It's not one of our, our main revenue generators. I can find the, the numbers for you on, on, on what we're at so far this year, but.
Sixty, sixty-six hundred dollars.
Yeah, so it's not a, not a major revenue generator, so that would probably be, if we want to try to keep it up, that, that it's, we're, we're selling it for what it's worth, but try not to go too far with it. We have a lot of people using it, that's for sure. It's a fine line of where we think we need to be and, and, you know, what is, what is acceptable and.
Sure. What's your closest competitor for bulk water?
The Villas-Lithopoulos has a, a bulk water station, and I'm, I'm not sure if, if Pickerton does and/or, or Groveport.
Okay. Anyway, we could find out what they're charging, because I got a real problem raising it on residents and not raising it on businesses at the same time.
Well, the bulk water rate is, the only reason that is, that's when, when a truck comes in with a big tank, so there, I, it's not our businesses here in town, it's, those are private water hauling companies that do that, not a, I just want to clarify that.
Oh, no, I understand, no, I, but still, it's, it's the guys doing the direction of boring, it's the guys hauling water out to.
Exactly.
The system properties that don't have wells, absolutely. But I mean, we're, if we're going to ask our residents to pay two percent compounding over the next four years, I think we should at least look at the bulk. I know it's not a big, it's not a big percentage of your sales at the water department, but it's more the principle of if we're going to do it to the residents, we should probably ask the contractors to chip in too, even though it's only sixty-six hundred dollars a year.
Matt, with these, these rate increases, do, do they take into effect this increased cost of these chemicals we're using? Are you going to eventually catch up so we don't have to go to the general fund? It'd be the rate users paying for, for this?
No, we wouldn't go to the general fund. I guess a reappropriation out of the water fund or the sewer fund if we were doing that.
Okay.
Kind of the same process as what we did this evening, earlier on the.
I misunderstood, okay, I got it now.
Yeah, these are completely self-sufficient.
Yeah.
We have healthy fund balances, but we want to keep it that way as well.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Mr. Peoples, the complaints were really low the last time per year that we've had on the city water. Is that still the same?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll get one every once in a while. We, obviously, we flush hydrants, we'll stir up the system that way. We've had a couple anomalies at our treatment plant that we've addressed, will get some disruption in the system. We had a major water break out at Canal Point, uh, no, I'm sorry, out of Bixby Road at, at one of the industrial facilities. A truck hit a hydrant in the middle of the night, knocked it off. That was just at the beginning of, of August. That disrupted system, I mean, we lost thousands, hundreds of thousands of gallons of water with that, so, and all flowing into one point.
But as far as the softness and all that?
So I haven't had any of those water quality, I, I won't say none. You know, some people are more used to totally soft water, and if they are and they, they're not getting that, then, then they can tell a difference.
Okay.
But we do not produce completely soft water because, for one, we can't afford it with the, the chemicals that have to go into it, and for number two, it'd be aggressive in our, in our distribution system. And we. And for number two, it'd be aggressive in our, in our distribution system. And we would, we'd be fixing a lot of water breaks.
All right.
We don't want to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, go ahead.
We spoke earlier about this. And I had mentioned forecasting out to see, you know, like, what would 2.5% do for you in terms of offsetting your cost of chemicals and things like that, or 3%? Because everybody knows that our costs are going up. I mean, were you able to put those numbers to pencil at all?
Yeah, I mean, just, I did something based on kind of a year-to-date, what we've had in revenue so far. So if we had a 2% increase for next year, we would be at, basically, an additional $23,000. At a 2.5%, it would be at $28,000. Of course, that, and that's at the water department. As you get out to 20, 24, 25, 26, and these do compound. But a total of, a year-to-date type of thing, of about $95,000 additional for 2% and $120,000 for a 2.5%. So the $25,000 difference, and that's total for the, for the four years. Year, for a year-to-date. So that plays out to about an additional $145,000 for a year, if everything stayed proportional. $145,000 additional water revenues per year for, with a 2%, $180,000 total per year. Or, I mean, total for the four years, for, for the 2.5%.
And, but the big driver here is your chemical costs. They're skyrocketing.
They are.
How much are they up year-over-year in terms of cost?
I don't have that information, but I can definitely send it out. Joe Taylor at the water plant keeps very tight eye on that. And would be able to answer that very, very easily.
Well, I just think it would be good to know, that would be a good number to know when we're looking at forecasting future water rates and stuff, because those chemicals are not going to get any cheaper. I would imagine you continue to see them go up 10% a year.
Yeah, I mean, even with our, with our budgeting, our conservative budgeting going, going forward, we, it did seem like we have an appropriation amendment for chemicals just about every year. You know, I mean, and we go in and we up that as well. But I'll get a historical, you know, look back four years over the last four-year rate ordinance and find out about that.
Thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion to move ordinance 22-034 to full council?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Walker.
A second.
Second by Mrs. Amick. Roll call, please.
Can I have a debate, please? I just, I have one more point on this. I mean...
Go ahead.
The 910, do you guys feel okay with leaving that flat for four years, or do we want to increase that too?
We can do the analysis. We can find out what our neighbors are doing and then have that. We can always change it for the, if we see the need to increase for, you know, with our competition sake, or leave it alone. We can do it and propose that at the next, at the next reading.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milligan?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Brings us to final resolution tonight, or ordinance tonight. Ordinance 22-035. Clark, please read the title.
An ordinance to set sanitary sewer user fees.
Mr. Peoples?
I don't really have a whole lot to add from the previous discussion. This is the, again, it's 2% per year for four years on this as well.
Any further discussion? All right. Do I have a motion to move ordinance 22-035 to full council?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Amick. Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Buskirk. Roll call, please.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milligan?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Bring just older new business. Any older new business?
Yeah, Mr. Clark, I see we have Ms. Mathias from the Chamber of Commerce with us this evening. I would maybe just ask council if there is any further questions with regards to her communication and discussion from past meetings. Anybody? No?
Okay. Okay.
I have 2.71 in there, but...
If you don't mind, if you just want to wait until we do public comments?
Why not?
Yeah, okay.
And Mr. Chairman, I have Mr. Pierce here too, from JRD.
Yeah. Mr. Pierce, would you like to give your report to council?
Yeah. Do you guys have a copy of my written report? Just some overview on the numbers. Youth stalkers are one of our largest programs in the fall. We do have 264 participants this fall, which breaks down to 29 teams. We did add a few new programs this fall. Hall baseball was new. Even with the new program, we still got 47 kids registered. Flag football transitioned away from the Touchdown Club. They felt that in the fall it was their busy season and requested that we help run the fall flag football program. That registration was a little lower than we had hoped for the first year. We had 30 kids registered, and that program will get started here next week. Youth volleyball also closed. Has a good partnership with the high school program. They helped facilitate that. That program starts this Sunday. We're excited about that. Boys and, boys and girls' basketball registration opened up this week. It's going to be one of our more popular winter programs, so we expect good numbers there. From a finance review standpoint, our revenue is up about 18% as compared to 2022, or 2021, excuse me. And I do believe that's based on adding in the flag football and the baseball as well. And right now, our account balance is up slightly, 5% from, compared to years past. It's at 63,000, 170. Some of the challenges we're facing right now, we are, I don't want to use the word begging, but we are pleading with our participants' families to help on the volunteer standpoint as, in regards to helping coaching. A lot of the rationale behind that is that people are overcommitted. So trying to get families to want to volunteer is something that we're facing a challenge with right now. Commissioners as well. Being a support commissioner is really time-consuming and a big ask of people to do. So we are working to try to incentivize them to want to take on that role as well. And then from a staffing standpoint, we have been down a full-time staff member since late March. And we are looking to post a position. We're starting with one part-time position and the option of adding a second part-time position in place of that full-time position. So we look to post that here in the next month. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer anything related to JRD.
So you're going to, from one full-time to two part-time positions? So you'll have you and then two others as part-time?
Correct. The rationale behind that was the amount that that salary was. To be able to retain somebody at that amount, we felt that offering two part-time positions where we would not need
Easier to fill.
Insurance.
Yeah, yeah.
Benefits.
Okay.
Could you maybe elaborate on the delineation of duties between those two positions?
Yeah, a lot of it's going to be, you know, one will be assisting more on the program aspect, so hopefully, you know, assisting with the evening and weekend coverage. And then the other aspect would be more communications-based with publishing a periodic newsletter, assisting with the website, content, social media, things of that nature.
In Jill's absence, I'd like to compliment Mr. Pierce. He's done an incredible job of smoothing out processes and enrollments and programs over there at JRD. And I think we all can agree that it's a really valuable program for our kids and for our community. Because I'm sure many of us have had, have made good friends at these sporting events through our children. So thank you very much, Mr. Pierce, for coming in and presenting to us this evening.
You're welcome. If there's ever any other additional information that you'd like to have on these reports, feel free to let me know.
Thank you. Thank you. I think we have time. Why don't, Denise, why don't you get up and give you, give, give your, give your report?
Just very quickly, I wanted to go through a couple of the questions at a high level. But the first thing I wanted to talk about was, sorry, I'll speak in here, speak in here. You know, fundraising. I heard a lot of questions about that. I listened to both meetings from the past, two meetings on this topic. And fundraising is very different in a not-for-profit business than it is for a nonprofit or a cause. So to give you an example, I believe I saw most, if not all of you, at the October Historical Society Gala. Great event, raise money for the Historical Society. I do not believe I saw all of you at the Chamber's annual dinner in February. And I'm assuming, because it doesn't have that same warm and fuzzy feeling in your heart to sponsor the Chamber in the same way that you do the Historical Society. And when you think about, I think, the large number of people in Canal that don't work in Canal, it's really hard to have local events that are fundraisers for the Chamber. I think the number's like 90% of people who live here don't work here. Something to that effect. So it's just not the same thing when I say, we're having a fundraiser so we can pay for an associate. I think it's, it doesn't have the same ring. Not to mention that a couple of years ago, we had a conversation with Destination Canal Winchester, where they wanted to retain right to all tourism events, which is fine. We agreed to that. As we would stay business-to-business and in supporting businesses, they would do tourism. So not only are we raising funds for a slightly different scenario, we also can't do anything that overlaps with Destination Canal Winchester. So just something to think about when you're challenging us on fundraising. It's just different in this environment to do that. I did provide you the support that we've done. I provided you our year-to-date numbers and our budget. You can see that we do live very simply at the Chamber. It's very modest. The membership fees cover our current part-time associate. The events we have cover themselves and give us a little bit extra. Just a little history on the dinner. We've tried to have it at several other locations. I know that was a topic that came up. And attendance drops by half. So while we might save a little money on a per-head basis, we don't get nearly the same turnout. At the current location, we have, it is incredibly expensive to hold an event there. And I think that if we had a full-time person who could sell all of the sponsorships that we had and work to make sure that we fill every seat in the house, it could become a meaningful fundraiser for us. But it takes a person to do that. I want to, I just wanted to be really clear about that. If I'm waiting on this wonderful event space at the park, then hopefully, we'll have the same, same draw to the local people in town. I offered you a couple different funding models. Some of them are very different. For example, New Albany sort of has a combination tourism-Chamber type thing, that don't really call it tourism, but that's what it is. We talked to them today for clarification on some of that. So there's all different Chamber models. What we're missing are grants and ad revenue to be able to beef up our income. And what we need is a person to run the shop while the rest of us do that. So Leslie, our treasurer, had a chance to go to the Ohio Mean Jobs informational seminar last week, and we discovered there is money there that we can tap into. But again, it's going to take one of us volunteers away from our day job to be able to figure that out and get it done. And what we're asking for is cover for a person to get, to get the work done so the rest of us can work on identifying those opportunities. I've given you some statistics in there to go along with that. I did want to do a through the history a little bit because I think it might paint a picture for why we're asking for a person. When we first started getting involved with the changer, Chamber, we had about $4,000 in the bank. There was a lot of bartering going on, a lot of sponsorships for not really paying for sponsorships. Tax returns, not being done completely, getting angry letters from the IRS. We had a lot of cleaning up to do and a lot of resetting of expectations to be able to do that. And we've worked really hard to do that. A lot of turnover because it is a part-time job with a lot of work, and many times, it does bleed over the 20 hours. We've been able, since 2018, to, we've increased our prices, we've increased the sponsorship. We've maintained a balance of members in that same area. But we, since 2018, we cannot grow past that. Like, for the last four years, it's been exactly the same because we don't have a full-time dedicated source doing anything. So really, when our manager resigned, we were like, well, this is the time to decide. Can we push this forward and be much more meaningful in the community and to our members and to the businesses? Or are we confident that we can just stay the way we are and that's acceptable? There was a point where we thought about just collapsing because of the low funds in the account and how difficult it is to get volunteers and someone to work at that pay scale. We kept humming along, but honestly, I've poured my heart and soul into the Chamber for the last four years. There's nowhere to go with, with volunteers. We've run it out. So that's why the dollar figure is so high. We were asking for a skilled professional to come in and take us to the next level. I do want to reiterate that it's just for three years. Many reasons we asked for the three years. But one of them is that the person that we hire knows that we have a timeline that we're working against, and they're not going to be out of a job in six months if we don't hit some of our goals. It gives us the runway to do those things. So I appreciate the smaller amounts that you were talking about. It really, it doesn't solve the problem. And I would rather see you rededicate those to other groups in the, in the community if we can't get the need. And I don't mean that in a threatening kind of way. I just mean, it is what it is. It's a person that we're talking about. I know there was a lot of talk about the bed tax, but I just wanted to clarify that there are contracts the city has out of the general fund, which I believe has grown $3, $4, $5 million in balance over the last couple of years. It's up to $17 million. Currently, Destination Canal Winchester gets $22,000. Human Services gets $63,000. The Barber Museum gets $3,600. Historical Society gets $8,000. So we were thinking it would be a contract in that fund similar to do with the other organizations. Currently, I think there was a question about the city and what they provide us. They're very generous, giving us a family pool membership for the silent auction. Every year, we get a $1,500 bed tax grant for the race, and we get to use the community center twice a year. I did include in the email an example of our bed tax grant, which I feel is very detailed and fact-based, showing an ROI. I'm not sure that everybody who asks for bed tax money does it, but I included it because that's the kind of report out we would then provide to you based on these funds. So I kind of just wanted to provide that commentary as you read through it. We fully expect through ad revenue and grants to be able to make up the $60,000. We just need the runway to get it going. I tried to do that really fast.
Thank you.
What questions remain? I'm sure you've all read my document in the hour you had before the meeting started.
Any questions?
Ms. Mathias, I read your previous proposal, and I admittedly didn't get to read the one you just sent before the meeting started. But can you tell me the number of businesses versus the number of memberships?
So there isn't a comprehensive list of all the businesses in Canal Winchester that we could bounce up our list against to be able to say, what's our penetration? We did do by zip code. We went through our membership, and 50% of our members have a physical location in 43110. But we have members like South Central Power, who right, is in Lancaster now, I believe. They moved officially to a new location. We have J-Dog Junk Removal, like 50, they just, they could, they want to do business in Canal Winchester even though they don't have a physical storefront. Right? This is an area they service or market to. But we do have several of the largest employers. I heard a lot of talk about the downtown businesses, and I just want to clarify that we have NIFCO and Manifold and, you know, Dailly, Nationwide Children's. We have several of the largest employers. We have turned down some members who want us to fight City Hall on their behalf, and that's just not something we do. So we may have lost a membership too, based on that, because they wanted to join in solely for us to help them in their causes. And we just, that's not something we do. So I wish I knew if there was a comprehensive list that we could do that with. So I wish I knew if there was a comprehensive list that we could do that with. Happy to do that if such thing exists.
Mr. Hare, do we have such a list of every business that's doing business within?
We have a pretty comprehensive list if they have a physical location here. We are lacking in home-based businesses unless they're registered with the city.
Sure. I don't know, maybe you two could get together and see what you can come up with.
Sure. Happy to do that.
Anything, Mr. Hare?
If you are, if you've had no market penetration increase since '18, have you thought maybe, like this New Albany model you said where it's combined?
Yeah.
Have you thought about looking at a model like that here? Maybe combining Chamber and Destination here to make it a more potent organization?
We'd be happy to have those discussions. Karen Stiles works 60 hours a day. I'm just not sure when that, what happened. But we could, I mean, that's something we could explore. Again, it would be based on volunteers right now, finding the time to do that. So every city is different, so.
Ms. Mathias, I think there was also some general concern about how, you know, we did just give some money to the JRD, and your proposal was kind of somewhat similar to that. And I think some members of this body might be concerned that, you know, it's just going to have this domino effect of people coming to us and asking for money. And so I was on the record in this discussion of supporting you with the bed tax money. I guess, help me understand why you'd rather see that money go somewhere else? Because the whole, I guess my thought process would be to take what money you can get and do something with it and be able to move that needle somewhere.
I appreciate the thought behind it, but what I need is a full-time person who can talk to members, get new members, convince them to come to our events, create an ad stream of revenue on our website. I need someone who can work with Lewis to welcome Lucas, to welcome new businesses to the community. I need someone to work with, to go to Central Ohio Chamber events and understand best practices and what we're missing out on. All of that has to come from a person who works at the Chamber. And I can't, we've tried moving the needle for the last four years in our current model, which is a part-time person that we can afford. By the way, part-time in this scenario was $15 to $16 an hour. Just, I'm not saying money is tied to smarts. I'm talking about who you can retain for that type of hourly pay. So we want to pay somebody $30-ish dollars an hour who has the skill and the background in building a membership and an association and can market appropriately the events that we're doing to drive attendance and have sales goals that they have to hit. I understand what you're saying about the can of worms. I heard that a couple of times. I didn't catch the reference to the Joint Rect district, but I don't think you asked them to do fundraising, right? I mean, they have a fund of money, they're using it to fund their personnel, they're doing it. But as a business owner, I get asked to fundraise from Brock Strong, Human Services, every sports team, Labor Day. I mean, there's only so many places that the money can go. And again, the Chamber is near and dear to nobody's heart but mine. From a can of worms perspective, I would hope to change your perspective that if somebody in the community came forward with an idea and they wanted to show value and add results and were willing to come to the table and talk to you and show you the progress that we made, no matter where it come from, that would be something the city would consider. I don't come asking for money, just asking for money. We provided a whole list of what our plan was, how we were going to ease off the money in three years, and willing to come to you twice a year and provide a report out. I would expect anybody else coming to the city for money would do the same thing.
What happens to the Chamber if you don't get the money?
Honestly, I'm going to resign at the end of the, I'm tired. I cannot do it anymore, and then it's just going to revert to some networking lunges and a couple of events. Unless somebody else picks up my slack. Like, I serve 200 families in the area with their financial status. There's a limit to my ability to carry on at this pace without some real strategic support behind me. And that's fine. I mean, if that's what you guys are comfortable with, then that's perfectly acceptable from a Chamber. I just see the vision of so much more than it can be, where we can offer certifications, we can provide more guidance with small business. I see the future of what it can be. I just can't do it alone.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry. I'm sorry that came out so harsh. I just, it's what it is, right? Sorry.
Appreciate your time tonight. Thank you. Is there any other older new business to come? I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Walker. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
We'll be reconvening at 7:15 for a regular council.
Thank you, Ms. Amick. We have a motion to approve with the suggested amendments.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. Amick and second by Mr. Walker. Roll call.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And minutes 22-034, August 15th, work session minutes, discussion. Roll call. Or I'm sorry, and a motion to approve, minutes 22-034?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Busker, second by Mr. Clark. Roll call.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Minutes 22-035, August 15th, city council minutes, discussion. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Busker, second by Mr. Clark. Roll call.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Minutes 22-036, August 29th, committee of the whole, minutes, discussion. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. Amick, second by Mr. Busker. Roll call.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll do communications and petitions. First item is Communication 22-010, liquor control letter in your packet. Then we have Communication 22-011, childhood cancer awareness proclamation. I'll turn this over to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Milliken. Whereas childhood cancer is a leading cause of death by disease in children, and 1 in 285 children in the United States will be diagnosed by their 20th birthday, there are approximately 40,000 children on active treatment at any given time. And whereas the average age of diagnosis is six years old compared to 66 years old for adults, on average, there's been 0.6% increase in incidence per year since 1970s, resulting in an overall incident rate of 24% over the last 40 years. Whereas 2/3 of the childhood cancer patients will have chronic health conditions as a result of their treatment toxicity, with 1/4 being classified as severe to life-threatening. Approximately 1/2 of childhood cancer families rating associated financial toxicity due to out-of-pocket expenses as considerable to severe. And whereas in the last 20 years, only four new drugs have been approved by the FDA to specifically treat childhood cancer. And whereas hundreds of nonprofit organizations at the local and national level, including the Friends of Faith Prudence Foundation, are helping children with cancer and their families cope with educational, emotional, and financial support. And whereas the researchers and healthcare professionals who work diligently dedicating their expertise to treat and cure childhood cancer. This deadly disease affects too many children, and more must be done to raise the awareness to find a cure. Now therefore, I, Michael Ebert, Mayor of the City of Canal Winchester, Ohio, proclaim the month of September 2022 Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and urge all residents to observe Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and support the cause that so deeply impacts families in every community across the United States. Therefore, signed, Michael Ebert, Mayor of the City of Canal Winchester. Tonight, we have Celia Kinsel, the mother of Logan Kinsel, who was diagnosed with stage IV brain cancer in 2016 when he was only 17 months old. Logan underwent 10-hour brain surgery with just a few days after it was discovered, and the entire tumor was removed. He completed chemotherapy treatments in August of 2016. Two months after his second birthday in November of 2016... Two months after his second birthday in November of 2016, he was diagnosed again with the same cancer. His second diagnosis was different, that he not only had one large tumor, but there were several tiny, inoperable tumors forming all over his brain and down his spine. There were too many tumors for them to make it... I'm sorry. There were too many tumors that were unable to count the exact number. He underwent brain surgery, high-dose chemotherapy, stem cell transplants, and proton radiation over the course of the next nine months. Today, as a thriving eight-year-old, he just celebrated a huge milestone in his cancer journey, the course of the next nine months. Today, as a thriving eight-year-old, he just celebrated a huge milestone. That means that he's been cancer-free for five years, and that, believe me, is a huge milestone. So at this time, I'd like to call Logan, his brother Rowan, and their mother, Celia, to accept his proclamation. All right, this is Rowan, if you haven't figured that out already. All right, I'm sorry. This is Logan, this is Rowan. This is Mom, too. So Logan, I want to give you this proclamation. I hope you'll hold on to that for when you're 90 years old, and remember this time.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, love stuff like that. Onto Communication 22-012, Madison Township Police Statistics for July. That is also in your packet. And Communication 22-013, Dr. Bender 5K Thank You Letter. At this time, we'll move on to public comments. Public comments are limited to five minutes per individual. If you wish to address council, please approach the podium, print your name and address, and begin speaking by stating your name. Your time will not begin until you begin speaking. When you have one minute remaining, you'll be gently interrupted to signal that your time is about to expire. After five minutes, you will be notified that the time has expired, and the podium should be vacated to allow the next person to speak. Let it be noted that this is not a time for council to answer specific questions. If you do have a question, you may ask it during your time, and we will attempt to have your question addressed throughout the remainder of this meeting. If you don't feel your question has been addressed, please reach out to a member of council or appropriate city director after the meeting. At this time, if there's anybody who wishes to speak, podium's yours.
Good evening. Ann Bennett, Canal Winchester resident for a little over 30 years. I return tonight to strenuously object to council proposing to stifle the voices of constituents through two proposed changes to its rules. They would slash each person's time allotted for public comment by 40%, from five minutes to three. And they would require written comments to be submitted by noon of the Friday prior to council meetings, which cuts the time to be included on the agenda by more than four hours. While there is no change to the rule which permits the presiding officer to permit someone to speak longer than the allotted time, the fact is that presiding officers rarely, if ever, extend that time. In fact, especially when controversial issues arise, presiding officers are so eager to shut down public comments that the speaker is interrupted with a one-minute warning. Regarding the shortened deadline for submitting written comments that are included in the agenda, I get it that preparing the agenda is a time-consuming process because the current method is a miserable oversight-prone exercise. Speech-to-text software should have been installed years ago. That is, on tonight's agenda as an item to be researched is long overdue, although the timeline for reporting and for targeted implementation needs to be defined rather than vaguely described as within a reasonable time. But penalizing the public because the city is years behind the times applying available technology is not right. If anything, the agenda should be published the Wednesday before the meeting to allow people to know what is on it and to have time to prepare written comments. Those comments could then be inserted before the agenda is sent to council. I request that proposed changes to City Council rules be amended so as to delete both the reduction of public comment time and the shortened deadline for receipt of written comments that are included on the agenda. On another matter, I ask city leaders immediately to begin and to both frequently and publicly report their progress on preparing for the influx of traffic and crime within Canal Winchester city limits that will occur when 1,400-plus high-density residential units are built between Winchester Pike and Shannon Road, and the commercial project on the southwest corner of Winchester Pike and Gender Road are complete. The Waterloo Crossing intersection now is in a chronic state of backup after 2:00 p.m. on Wednesdays and most of the weekends. Retail theft at adjacent stores is rampant. And I understand that last week there were instances of both assault and arson at the New Friendship Kitchen. Without proactive planning and intervention, within a decade, this section of Canal Winchester may resemble the decay that is seen on sections of South Hamilton Road and Bryce Roads. Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening?
My name is Carolyn Ebert. I live on Old Coach Place half for over 50 years, and we'll leave it at that. First of all, I am here to thank the council for the donation that they made to the Canal Winchester Labor Day Committee for the 100th Labor Day celebration. The money came from the Bedtax Fund, and I do appreciate you all allowing that to be donated to the committee. I just want to make one clarification. I've heard several members make... not members here, several people make comments that that was not our 100th year, that it was our 102nd. It was for the 100th Year Canal Winchester Labor Day Festival Celebration. Obviously, we missed a couple of years with the COVID. With the exception of Saturday, the weather held off for us. We all know that Saturday was kind of a bust just because of the weather, and people, you know, obviously didn't want to sit out in the rain for our concerts and whatever. I think we made up for it on Sunday, or Saturday and Sunday, Monday. So just to update you, the funds that were provided to us was used for the rides. Again, a lot of questions came to us, why did you change vendors? We changed vendors because we had no choice but to change vendors. The vendor that we had used for many, 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 many years made a decision to go to a different festival, and that was not conveyed to us until later in the year, so we had to go out and find a new vendor. We were very fortunate to find the vendor that we got. It was A&amp;S Entertainment. And I'm just going to tell you a story that happened regarding these folks, and this is the reason I say we were very fortunate to find them. There was a family that had four children with them, three little girls, and a little boy in a wheelchair, possibly 10 years old or thereabout. So they were out enjoying the festival, using the rides. The little boy was sitting with his sisters and cousin, I believe it was, at the bottom of the zip line and watching them, and, you know, smiling and having a good time. The gentlemen that were working the ride asked him if he wanted to ride, and his mother said, well, he can't because he can't walk. They said, you give us the permission, we will carry him up those steps. And it was, I don't know how many feet it was up in the air, but it was a pretty steep, you know, step to go up. They carried that little boy to the top of those steps. They hooked him up, secured him very tightly, all of them gathered around him to cheer him on, and that little boy got to take his first first ride. And he's 10 or 12 years old, and that's the first time he had ever been on a, using a ride. To me, this was top-notch people that were working that day. So will we use them again? I certainly hope we will. We'll make that decision when we start doing our future planning. But just, that's the type of people that we had here that day. The rides were different, but it was due to the fact that we had to do that. I give credit to the volunteers that worked the information tent. Kit Lloyd worked diligently getting a lot of new community members in there, working the information tent. A lot of her church family worked it, so we had, at times, we had more people in the volunteer tent. Ms. Amick, you were one of those that helped that day, so I thank you for that, and I thank you for everybody that came out to the event and supported us. We will probably...
One minute.
Pardon me?
One minute.
We will probably start working, probably January for next year, and we've already had a commitment from Ugly Mug that they want to be a part of our festival again next year. So I thank you very much for your support.
My name is Case Argent. I live at 6732 Brayswick Court in Canal Winchester. I want to touch on two things tonight. One is traffic safety with the warehouses going in and increased residential homes also. We really need to push on the traffic safety. You know, I have come to this entity before talking about it. The ODOT track had a meeting, I don't know, was it last week or the week before? The Bixby Road, Highway 33 interchange is part of a $1.2 billion effort to improve Highway 33. They seem to be focusing on Highway 33 and the 270 interchange. I'm really hoping that Canal Winchester really pushes on the Bixby Road and Highway 33 interchange. We really need that. We... I'm hoping that next year, the Gender Road, next phase will come to fruition. Another thing I want to talk about tonight is communication. The last time I was here at the City Council meeting, I talked about how friendly and welcoming people of Canal Winchester are, and I stand by that. That does not include this entity. It's hard for me to come to these meetings. There are people who call people idiots. There are people who roll their eyes. There are people who are arrogant. The fact that you are discussing cutting the amount of time by almost half, I know it's 40%, it's almost half. So what's going to happen? I come here, I take time out, I don't feel welcome. I talk for two minutes, I get a one-minute warning, and maybe somebody pats me on the head and says, you can talk more. What an insult. The lights in here are very, very bad. They trigger migraines, this kind of lighting. So I am going to have to leave at this time. And my three minutes are up.
Anyone else? Okay. Reports from city officials and staff. Mayor's report, Mayor Ebert?
Thank you, Mr. Milliken. I did not have a written report, but I want to add a little bit of something what Carolyn said earlier about the Labor Day Festival. We also, speaking of kids, we had about a 13-year-old girl who was autistic, and she bought a raffle ticket for the TV. She won the TV. She was elated. She was just thrilled to death. You'd think she won a million dollars, but we were so happy for that. So it was a good weekend for the kids, I think. But I don't have a written report, but I do need a report for the August 22 Canal Winchester Mayor's Court Report.
Chair will make a motion to approve the Mayor's Court Report.
Second.
Motion was made by the chair, second by Mr. Walker. Roll call.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Questions for Mayor Ebert? Okay. Fairfield County Sheriff's Department Sergeant Walker.
Thank you. Just some noteworthy things that happened, like Ms. Bennett said. There was a vehicle fire at Friendship Kitchen. It is being investigated as an arson. There was also a theft that turned into a robbery when the suspect pushed the clerk down at Friendship Kitchen as well. And then Saturday night, after the festival was over at, I believe it was Gollier Park, am I pronouncing that right?
Gollier.
Yeah. You guys know what I'm saying. We had a report of a shooting. When we went to investigate it, it was kids with paintball guns. So we're still actively investigating that, trying to find the suspects out of that. That's all I've got. I'll take questions if you have any, though.
I will say that I saw the drones out, and that was pretty cool. And I hear that there's some photography associated with those? Possibly?
Yes, we did take photos for surveillance purposes, and I handed those over to Hannah, so she has those. And Mr. Walker, I will get with you for those as well.
Cool.
I'd like to also thank you for the presence and the safety that you all provided. You were everywhere, all the time. You were everywhere all the time, and much appreciated.
My pleasure.
They were following me.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sergeant Walker. Appreciate your team's hard work over the weekend. Finance Director, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Milliken. I don't have anything in addition to my written report this evening.
Okay. Did I miss, I skipped somebody? Oh, I'm sorry. Law Director, Mr. Boggs. I had some notes there messing me up.
I didn't feel left out, don't worry. I don't have a written report this evening. I am requesting executive session on two topics this evening, and happy to answer any questions you may have on other topics.
I just have a quick question regards to the timing of public comments. You're probably the most, you've seen more meetings than most of us in other municipalities. What are some other municipalities doing as far as time limit on public comments?
Three minutes, in my experience, is the typical time that is allotted around Central Ohio at least. And not every municipality has sort of open public comment portion for items that aren't on the agenda. So, for those that do, three minutes is typical.
Yeah, I would just say, for the record, even though they're gone, I, public comments don't end here. You know, you can public comment to me via email all week long, so I'm sure that goes for everybody else, too. So, any other questions for Mr. Boggs?
Okay. Public Service Director, Mr. Peoples.
Thank you, Mr. Milliken. Just a couple of items. The track process is ongoing. There's a public hearing that we will probably attend next month on the process. There was some scores that were released. I'm not sure those are, those are not the final scores, from what I understand. Those are based on some technical merits of the project, but there are other things that go into it, rather than just the technical merits of the project. So keep that in mind, this is a long process. It seems like that we will be hearing something concrete by December, from what I understand on the schedule. Speaking of December, also, we submitted for ODOT safety funds for the Gender Six Project, which is some lane additions and pedestrian access over, on Gender Road over 33. So again, that's a December timeframe for that. The Tryon Street Waterline has started. We actually dug the hole last week. It is a very large hole to do the directional bore, I'm sorry, the jack and bore underneath the railroad tracks. That started today with a railroad inspector there. So we're hoping that that portion of it gets done, and then it's hopefully a couple-week process as we go through and finish that connection. That is one of our older lines in town. We believe it's from the '30s, but are still working to try to get some of that information. And then on the Labor Day, the rides, I'll put my two cents in, they were awesome. They were out of here last night about 10:30. Now, they weren't on the streets, but typically when the public works crew comes in and do the cleanup, they have to wait for the ride vendors to get out of the way. These guys were all cleaned up. We actually were able to use a street sweeper around them in the parking lot here. They did have problems with one ride, but we still had the portable restrooms out there that we had to block off anyway, so it ended up working out pretty well for them to be able to do that. I believe that ride is gone. I didn't see it when I walked in. So, but they did do a great job, and they were great to coordination with them on Friday to setting everything up, very good communication.
I know with my kids, I noticed, I mean, I hate to use the term, but these weren't your average carnies. They were, they were good people. They really were. Also, so the ODOT track process, those scores you mentioned, did you say you have seen them or haven't seen them?
There, I have not seen them. Our engineer, Shane Spencer, was on the online portion of the meeting. He said that there was a score in the 43 range. He thought the average score was 48. And I do know that, you know, from a ranking standpoint, it was ranked behind the I-71, 70-71 interchange, the next phase of that monstrosity downtown. And then also, it was behind the Pickerington Road interchange, which is, has already been through Tier One, which is what this, our project, if you will, is going through Tier One, which is designed right away and that type of thing. So they've already been past that. I know that is a priority project for Governor DeWine as well, so I'm not surprised that we're behind those two. Additionally, Morpsy ranked their choice, and they were the exact same way with I-70-71 number one, Pickerington Road number two, the 33 Project number three, and then there was a 270 and 70, I'm sorry, 270 and 71 on the north side, and then a Route 23 corridor improvement from, basically from Delaware up to, from Delaware to Worthington. Those were four and five, and I don't know the exact numbers on those.
In the discussions that you've had up to this point, I kind of hesitated putting it in my letter to them, because I didn't want it to come across the wrong way. But it seems that, you know, this end of town kind of gets kind of put in the dark compared to the northern part of Columbus.
That's for sure.
Has that point been made?
Yeah. Mayor and I, we called in Morpsy and their Transportation Director, and we talked to her. This has been three or four years ago. And we said, you know, we're not getting anywhere with ODOT. She met with them, with District Six mainly. She came back to talk to us, she goes, you could tell that she was kind of perplexed of what was going on. And she actually told us, she goes, I don't know how else to explain it except for apathy. And it was just like, that's what we, the sense we get as well, at least at that time. Since then, things have definitely changed. There's definitely engagement there. You know, there was always a lot of focus up on the north side. I thought it was actually a good sign that we ranked above, at least from the Morpsy standpoint, above 70 and 270, Polaris area, and then 23. I know both of those, I've been up there. You know, my aunt lived in Delaware. We used to drive up 23, and it was a 10-minute ride, it seemed like. And now I think it's about an hour to go up there. So, I mean, both of those projects are, definitely had some need in them, but it does seem like we've been neglected for a long time. You know, I will recognize that we did get to Hill-Diley interchange before the Pickerington Road. That was through, done through District Five at that time, was kind of controlling that. But just, it seems like everywhere else has gotten a piece of the pie in Franco County, except for down here. Things are looking up. I'm cautiously optimistic. They put a, ODOT has put a heck of an effort into some studies that they've done down through here recently, you know, engaging with some of the other communities. City of Columbus was on, was in meetings, which is, which was a huge step as well. You know, even after that track meeting, I think it was the next day, Lucas, I was copying an email that some of the engineers were working with Lucas on some of the incentive contributions that we can provide as part of that. They wanted more information. They provided them on the TIF, you know, possibly on a, the North Point, a million and a half dollars, and just pointing out some of those type of things. So that was after they released those scores. So that, that's where I think, I don't think that those are final. I'm not saying that they've changed, the rankings will change, but there's still a lot of information that they're gathering. So that, that's aside from the technical aspects of the projects.
Matt, do you know, as part of the 43 points, was the economic development part of the 43 points, or is that coming later?
Yeah, I don't know which part that was. Shane Spencer said he had to jump off for a second for another meeting, but he did say it was, he still hasn't found those numbers published anywhere. So I'm not sure where, what kind of context those are. So I just want to be, you know, throw that out there. But like I said, I sit on the Morpsy Transportation Advisory Committee, and last week, we did a ranking based on Morpsy's recommendations, and it was those top three, or top five, I guess, but we were three on that. I voted for, I understand that process. So I did vote for that ranks, ranking.
That, the, on Mr. Taylor's water thing with the tank, that they have to repair the fiberglass for the brine heater, is that something that's going to be, is that an easy process for you guys, or is that going to?
It is not going to be an easy process. We're still trying to figure that out. Our brine tanks are probably 10-foot diameter and 25 feet high. We have, basically, it's road salt, if you will, but it's for water. It's food grade. So we put that into the tanks. The bottom, you know, six or so feet is heated, has water in it. Brine will freeze, especially as it's sitting there, it does take at it lower temperatures. But to make sure that doesn't happen, but the way the tank is built, they have, they put the fiberglass on it, and then they wrap some heat trace wire around the bottom, and then put fiberglass over the top of that. So we're trying to figure out how we do that without having to replace an entire, you know, brine tank.
Sounds like a challenge.
They'll come up with something. Those guys are smart.
I'm sure they will.
Yeah.
What else?
Well, most as smart as Franklin County.
One additional question. Did you resolve the issue with the lights at night at the McGill Park?
We actually, we've, when we first put them on, I know there's some issues with some complaints on that, but I think there's, if I counted right, I was emailing with Ms. Amis. We had, there's 27 lights that are out there, and one of them's along, a group of them's along the main drag, and then there's a group of them that go off for the roadway that's by the soccer fields. We actually have them all on initially, but I believe it's 10 o'clock, the group that goes off, I think there's 11 of them, that go off on the soccer fields do turn off on that. But the rest of them do stay off, stay on throughout the night. You know, we feel that we've made a major investment out there, and we want to protect that. You know, we have put in there, those are LED lights, so, and they are at a lower, lower temperature. I think that's how it works. Rather than, you know, I think, you've all seen, South Central Power's been replacing some of their streetlights here recently, and they're at a very high temperature, getting borderline on that blue color, on the white light, almost like the daylight color, if you think about those bulbs. So ours are, I think they're around the 3200, which is a soft white light. You know, going out there, you can see the light, but the light doesn't shed the way that you, as we go through some tech review type of things, and shedding light on and off of, off the property.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Peoples.
You're welcome.
Development Director, Mr. Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Milliken. Just a few updates on some legislation. So the ordinance 22026 and 22027 that are the authorizing community reinvestment area agreements, I'd ask those remain on the table. So we have had some progress with the Groveport-Madison schools on those, but we can't enter into those agreements till we have approval of the school districts. So that has not been on their agenda yet, will be on an upcoming agenda. So just ask that those remain on the table. In regards to the closing at 20 South High Street, our intention is to close prior to the end of the month, so we're just working on some, getting some final documentation put in place, and with Mr. Moody the Cellar on getting that closed. So the lease was one of the steps we needed to complete. So thanks you, thank you all for working with me on that, and hopefully that'll get approved this evening, so we can move that one forward. And then the update to the final development plan for Green Gate, there is some updated documents in your plans, some revised drawings that show the limited common area and where fences can be installed, as well as the type of fences. The developer's here this evening to discuss those with you. So when we get to that point in the agenda, there'll be more discussion on that, and be happy to answer any questions you want.
Questions for Mr. Hare?
Thank you, sir. Resolution 22-033, clerk, if you'd read that, please?
A resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Steve Paul's group to serve the remainder of an unexpired four-year term as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission expiring on December 31, 2023.
Sponsor is Mr. Shea.
I would move to adopt.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Clark. Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amy?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Resolution 22-034, clerk, if you'd read that, please? I'm sorry, we tabled that, my apologies. Resolution 22-035, if you'd read that, please?
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Sponsor is also Mr. Shea.
I move to adopt.
Chair will second. Motion was made by Mr. Shea, second by the chair. Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Upstate.
Ms. Amy?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Resolution 22-036, clerk, if you'd read that?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter a lease agreement with the Canal Winchester Industry and Commerce Corporation and declaring an emergency.
Chair will make a motion to adopt Resolution 22-036.
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Motion made by the chair, second by Ms. Amick. Roll call.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Ms. Amy?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Are we voting on the emergency, or are we voting on the resolution?
The resolution. It's included.
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Resolution 22-037, clerk, if you'd read that, please?
A resolution to authorize the mayor to acquire an access easement for Fairfield-Tryon LLC.
Sponsor is Mr. Shea.
I move to adopt Resolution 22037.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Shea, second by Ms. Amick. Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amy?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amy?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
And Resolution 22-038 has been removed from consideration. Tabled ordinances, 22-026 and 027 will remain tabled this evening. And on to third readings for ordinance 22-028. Clerk, if you'd read that, please?
An ordinance to require notification of location in the Historic District and Preservation District.
Sponsor is Mr. Shea.
I move to adopt ordinance 22028.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Clark. Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amy?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-029, clerk, if you'd read that, please?
An ordinance to amend the rules of the Canal Winchester City Council.
And that's second reading. Ordinance 22-030, clerk, if you'd read that, please?
An ordinance amending the final development plan for the Green Gate Residential Development.
Sponsor is Mr. Shea.
Second reading only.
Ordinance 22-031, clerk, if you'd read that, please?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and clerk to accept and execute the plot of Green Gate subdivision Phase 3 and 5.
Second reading only. And ordinance 22-032, clerk, if you'd read that, please?
An ordinance to amend the 2022 appropriation ordinance number 21-053, amendment number twenty-one dash zero-five-three, amendment number four.
Sponsors, Ms. Amick.
First reading only.
Thank you. Ordinance twenty-two dash zero-three-three, Clark, if you'd read that, please?
An ordinance to authorize the mayor or designee to enter into contracts with the Director of Transportation for the installation of a cable barrier along U.S. Route Thirty- Three.
Sponsors, Mr. Busker.
First reading only.
Ordinance twenty-two dash zero-three-four, Clark?
An ordinance to set water user fees for customers outside the special water allocation district.
Sponsors, Mr. Walker.
First reading only.
Ordinance twenty-two dash zero-three-five, Clark, if you'd read that, please?
An ordinance to set sanitary sewer user fees.
Sponsors, Ms. Amick.
First reading only.
Thank you. Council reports, next council and work session meeting Monday, September nineteenth at six p.m., followed by October third at six p.m., and then again October seventeenth at six p.m. CW Human Services, Mr. Walker?
I have nothing to report at this time, however, Mayor Ebert, if you could emphasize a little bit on the pumpkin.
Pumpkin's helping people?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a pretty good thing we got going there, it's three children, three siblings, they're selling pumpkins online, I think it's fifteen dollars and twenty dollars, if I'm not mistaken, but I bought two last year, and I tell you, you've never seen a better pumpkin than what they, they are still great, they wash them before they give them to you and everything, they're really good. They're a five oh one C three, this is like started in two thousand seventeen, I think, and they're still going at it, good for them, and that all proceeds to the Human Services and the Association of Statisticists, I can't, I can't get the input right now. Good cause.
Thank you, Mayor.
CW ICC, Ms. Amick?
Yes, thank you, I have just two things I want to highlight, one is that the library has closed on three parcels across from the swimming pool parking lot, and so I think the estimate is twenty-five to thirty-five thousand square feet, and so excited about that. And then, also, a mobile medical spa provider has made a decision to move their headquarters to downtown CW, and our next meeting will be November thirtieth at eleven-thirty here in council chambers.
Sorry, Ms. Amick, who's that supplier you said?
It's, the supplier is actually Mobo, they're a medical, a mobile medical spa supplier.
Okay.
And they're actually looking to move to downtown Canal Winchester and make some improvements on residential space.
That's cool. CW J R D, Mr. Shea?
Well, we had Mr. Pierce visit earlier, and I have nothing to add to what he gave us.
Okay. Destination, farmer's market ends at the end of the month, also had some assistance helping out with Labor Day, and starting to do some planning for Christmas in the village. And with that, we'll move on to old and new business, if there's any. Mr. Milliken, it's our desire to discuss the fence design in regards to ordinance twenty-two zero-three-zero, the updated renderings and? Yeah, we can talk about that now, if anybody has anything, I'll open up the floor. Yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity to present again, really not a lot to add, I believe you all saw in the packet, we tried to take some of the feedback we heard a couple weeks ago, and some of the questions. The first exhibit that was added, that is more of the overall layout of the community that you see there, there was just some questions about like the distance between the fences once we put that in, so we went ahead and had our engineer draw, what's shown now compared to what you saw before is the deepest house that's currently being offered out there, and with the thirty-foot fence on the back. The biggest question I think that came out of that is the southern parcel or on the bottom of there, what would be the distance between there, and would there still be enough space? As you can see in there, it's just a little over fifty feet, would still be the green space in between those, so I know that was one. The one, I believe, on the north, or at least planned north, as you look at it, I think it's like a hundred and seventy-some feet between them still on that side, so it doesn't, anything we presented with that doesn't change what the limited common area or the LEC area is, we just wanted to better graphically show you kind of the distance between those since that had come up. The other probably more important feedback that we heard was being sure to maybe be more specific about the exact type of fence in order to try to keep it consistent for a longer period of time. Again, we stayed away from picking a name brand or a specific model, but you'll see in there, in both the description as well as the exhibits or the examples, we tried to go with a standard, I believe two rails and one rail without like pickets on top or without the spears on top, and then just allowing an option to add the puppy pickets on the bottom for people with the small dogs, so that's really the only variation there would be, which you really shouldn't see from like the streetscape or whatever anyways, from that standpoint. So, we think with your help, we've hopefully defined it a little bit more, and can be something that the condo association can monitor closely and make sure everything's being done, so that it looks like a similar streetscape as you're driving through the community. So, appreciate your feedback on those previously, and hopefully this helps alleviate some of those concerns that I believe some council had two weeks ago. With that, I'll be happy to answer any other questions that maybe have come up since we were last here.
Oh, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you, appreciate it.
Any other old and new business?
I just have one, Ms. Jackson, I just want to go back to the police study a little bit, has anything been done, do we know if information has been sent, requested yet by the consultants, and sent to the consultants?
I have the list, we are in the process of setting up our kickoff meeting, which we're hoping to do next week.
Okay, okay, perfect, thank you.
Oh, I got one.
Go ahead.
I got a couple.
Okay.
I thought at one meeting we discussed carrying old and new business items on the agenda, did we all agree to that?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Jordan, can we start doing that next, for the next meeting, please?
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. And then, the, oh, I wanted to have a little comment about pedestrian safety. I brought you all something to look at. This is my bike, rolls really well, and this is what happens when you're thrown in front of a car trying to run over your daughter in a crosswalk, so we've all heard a lot of issues about pedestrian safety for a long time in our town, and we all want it to be more pedestrian friendly, and so I brought this in as sort of a call to action for us because there are children that walk around this town that may not be with their parents, and we have several key crosswalks that seem to be shooting alleys, if you're, or ducks on a pond, or, you know, like you're playing points with cars, and wanted to bring that point up. I know that Matt, your department has worked really hard to bring more awareness to pedestrian safety, the green crosswalks are really helpful, especially when you're driving because you can see them, but I'd like to ask to explore, one, to identify what our most dangerous intersections are for pedestrians, in the old town especially, and then try to formulate a plan to maybe get some better control there.
Where, which intersection did that happen?
That was Washington and Waterloo. And I did, and it's funny, when I was walking here, I was watching, I saw three people here at Trine and Waterloo, and it was dad and two children, and they're waiting, several cars go by, and eventually, one of Clamfet's trucks stopped and let them go through, and that seems to be the only way that we get people through, and maybe we can all be the change ourselves by taking more time to look for those pedestrians in the crosswalks and stop them, and try to lead by example, and maybe other people will catch on. I mean, there's all, there's all kinds of little ways to improve it, but we want to have a safe, walkable, pedestrian-friendly, small-town charm, and I'm just concerned that, well, I guess we're always gonna have this challenge, so, I mean, but it's how do we manage it, and just looking for ideas, too.
There has been considerable things done to those interchanges, they, you know, we've done bigger signs, we've done the green things, they've repainted, I mean, it's not like they haven't, you know, haven't done anything, not saying that maybe isn't something more that can be done, that we can look at, but at some point, people just need to understand a crosswalk period, it's a right-of-way, the either walker or a bike has a right-of-way in a crosswalk, and not enough people understand that, unfortunately, but, you know, I don't know what else.
They're, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, yeah, I was just gonna say, Mr. Mayor, can we add that to your newsletter, please?
It's already printed.
Can we schedule it for next spring, and people start walking again?
Yeah, but we try to put some stuff out, you know, especially right around with summer coming on with the pool, there was actually a recent change in the state law, where it used to, used to be, Mr. Clark, you kind of alluded to it, if you're, if you're in the crosswalk, you have the right-of-way, is what the old one was, but now, if you're at the curb at the crosswalk, you have the right-of-way, the problem is, is that you'll lose if you go out there and somebody's gone, and that's, yeah, it is, and most people don't know that that law has changed, you know, most people didn't know it was at that, you know, it's, I'm not sure how, how the driver's education is going now, but, you know, there are more people on bikes and on, and walking than was when I was, when I went through it, that's for sure, so, you know, it is something that, whether we get some, get the word out type of thing through using that type of that, the Washington-Woodloo intersection, we actually did perform a study on that from a safety standpoint back in two thousand sixteen, and implemented some of those, some of the provisions, I'll have to review the study to see if there was anything else past that, but that one is, in my opinion, that is our, probably our most dangerous intersection, if you're ranking one, just with that three-way intersection we have there, the crosswalks, Dairy Queen right down the street, everybody's walking down there, the pool right around the corner, and the park, it just, there's, it's a destination area for us, and it does get its fair share, you know, I try to look out for pedestrians there that are standing and, you know, waving a bye, you know, even if I'm in the middle of the road going down, like I said, that's making people more aware of that new law might help as well.
You know, I think in addition, you know, pedestrians, I see, seems like it's increasing more and more, is people running in the middle of the street, too, I think that's something that's gotta be curbed somehow, but.
Mr. Peoples, how often do the crosswalks get restriped, when they start to fade?
There's no set schedule, just as if we notice them or are made aware of them and that type of thing, but it does, especially in those type of intersections, you know, the, where you're going, actually, I just heard over the weekend, you know, so on Washington Street, for example, at the curb, as you're going towards the high school, the centerline there is fine on each side of the curb, but in the curve, people coming northbound, turn in there, they're driving all over that, the more, there actually, tires are contacting that, that paint on there, the more it wears off, so you have that at every crosswalk, we used to paint the crosswalks ourselves, and as soon as we would get done, they would be darkened, would just, tire tracks going across them, even if, you know, sufficiently dry, it would just get dingy, and we were doing that every year on those type of things, so we've started doing a lot of thermoplastic, which lasts a lot longer, but it's, it's a lot harder to replace because you have to grind it off and then put it back down as well, so, and those do get much more expensive. Most of the time, our crosswalks are only what we call the federal aid road, which is our main roads, you know, in, through town, it's, you know, High Waterloo, Washington, Columbus Street, we had a Deeds Drive, Groveport Road, those are the ones that have actual crosswalks on them, if you're getting out into the subdivisions, there's just not a lot of crosswalks at all, lower speed, lower volumes, that type of thing, that we don't, the necessity for those are there. If we, if there's a bike path facility along that route, then, you know, that's when we've started going in and putting that green markings on there, those signify the bike lanes and some of those crossings there, that's what we started the, last year, a year before, on West Waterloo Street, when we put in a new path for Cherry Landing.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, we've said this before, I think all of us has had a conversation with you at some point about pedestrian safety, and I think that, Mayor, you mentioned it, the foot traffic's up, I mean, in, you know, not to neglect other parts of town, but it is mostly centered around the old town, downtown Canal Winchester, and I'll always be looking for opportunities to make it a more pedestrian-friendly environment, so.
You know, I think, you know, I've got other communities around us, close by, in Lancaster, and I think we have more runners and walkers in this town than in this town combined around us, there's a bunch of them, all the time.
Yeah.
We considered maybe some of these that Mr. Shea, you were talking about, that are the most likely that, or I want to say dangerous, but close calls or anything that appear to be where attention's needed, is there a, I know we have the LED speed limit sign, but possibly the LED flashing for those crosswalks?
And I've seen those at places that you don't expect a crosswalk, at an intersection, you expect a crosswalk to be there, and pedestrians, as you go through, and I've seen them in other places, but mainly it's been in the center of a street, if you're going down, and it's, there's just a crossing there, downtowns, we have something, you know, at, for example, here out in front of Shades, how we have that, there's, I've seen towns where they have a crosswalk such as that, you know, in a business area, and have those, they're push buttons, they're just like a crosswalk type of thing, but they start lighting up as they go through to bring a little bit of attention, you know, those might be included in the report that we had done on there, so, you know, that was, like I said, two thousand sixteen, and we implemented the measures on there, and it was a, let's implement the signage that we put up there and then see what, where we're at, so, let's see where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Peoples, how feasible would it be to do something like maybe speed bumps on, I don't know, a street maybe like Washington?
Financially feasible?
Well, I just.
Or operationally?
Operationally, more so, yeah.
How often will I stop?
Yeah, there's, with that down, too, there, the speed bumps, they'll slow traffic right there, but they increase noise, you have to slow down and speed up right past those each time, you know, I know Columbus has, in some of the older neighborhoods along High Street, you know, like Clintonville area, they have those big speed ramps down through there, obviously, they can be done, but we work with the sheriffs, we try to bring attention to it with our speed trailers, and the, some enforcement out there, and actually doing speed studies, a lot of the times, when you're standing still and someone's going by you at twenty-five, you'll swear that they're going forty, and just because you're at that point, so we've done, we've had them do anonymous speed studies, meaning ones where the sheriff's not just standing there, they could do it, I guess, more stealthily, if you will, you see a cop car, you're gonna slow down immediately, and when you're doing a study, that doesn't help those type of things, but.
That's why I ask you, because I don't think of things like that, so, thank you.
Yeah, so we've done studies with tubes, our tube system is now out of date, so we've been looking to replace those.
But, and the reason, back to the LED, the reason for those particular spots, is I think in this circumstance, there was a glare of the sun, am I right, Mr. Shea?
There was, it was seven-thirty in the evening, and the poor guy's driving west, and, you know, looking right into the sun, that's why I wasn't even really mad at him after I calmed down a little bit.
So, if this is one of those spots? So, if this is one of those spots and the sun is just right and people are driving, that LED is what I was thinking, because I knew the story a little bit from, before walking in, that maybe something flashing would pick up and...
We want to limit the use of those, those signs, those flashing signs, and only because the more you put out there, the more than, if they're always, if they're everywhere, people will just ignore them. We have, we have speed limit signs everywhere, they just don't pay attention to them, you know, we, in some of those key areas and the transitions between the thirty-five and twenty-five, those are the ones that we want to really key on, and that's why they're in, in those locations that we have there.
And I like your numbers on the road.
Yeah, yeah, I like that, that's worked out pretty well, just, just to add that notification, that bring awareness.
Thanks, good discussion. Old or new business, anyone else? All right, hearing none, Chair would like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session for the conference with attorney regarding pending litigation involving the city, as well as regarding negotiations with another political subdivision regarding requests for economic development assistance, where the information is directly related to a provision of chapter seven one five or provision of public infrastructure improvements. Motion to adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
Second by the Chair, I guess, motion was made by Ms. Amick, second by the Chair.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Timeout eight twenty-five.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, how do you have a key and what the tools are, I don't even know where it was now. I'd like to go in the conference room, but that's just, I'm just wondering.